All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started with our regular council meeting for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, there were two items on the council's closed session agenda tonight. The first item was not held. Second item, council had a discussion and gave direction to staff on that item, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. If you will please rise and join me for the invocation with Pastor Nate Marsh, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God, your ways are greater than our ways, and you see clearer than our finite vision. You know the best paths that lead us through the swamps and canyons of life. Would you have mercy on us and help our leaders to have wisdom beyond their personal expertise? Give them a passion for the prosperity of this community and help them to know how to help those that need extra assistance and when to turn away from unproductive opportunities. God, heal past wounds and bring peace to previous conflicts. Sometimes we find ourselves at odds with others wanting opposite outcomes. Would you point to the path of unity that allows for most to reach the heights of their capabilities? God, as always, protect our protectors, our police, our fire, our medical personnel, bless our government officials and their staff who help orchestrate the regulations and laws of our city. We see your work among us with the great abundance of rain and the green hills and grass. Thank you so much. Thank you that you
I think we can find a couple of neon lights in the lounge.
That you allow
Technical difficulties.
... development of our city. Lord, thank you for your grace upon us.
I'd say we're very good.
Oh, Lord. God, guide us in exposing evil and punishing those who take joy in destruction. May we see the fruit of your ways. May we seek them personally and watch over this council and their families and give them joy in serving their community. Help our citizens to assist them in seeking what's good and not be a burden to them. Bless this time and this chamber for the accomplishment of much good and the refreshment of all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor Marsh, for your tolerance of our technical difficulties. Mr. Albro, City Manager, report, please.
You can tell our audio system has changed. We'll have to let Chrissy know she was missed. Well, just wanted to let everybody know we have an All About Youth event coming up at the Lumpoke Library, March 9th. It's a partnership with the Lumpoke Library and the Women's March of Santa Maria Valley. It'll be for young people to voice what is going on in the community and give input on economic opportunities and quality of life for 14- to 30-year-olds. We also put our draft general plan environmental justice element up. It'll be up for 30 days for review, and there's a link on our webpage that you can click on to see that. The Parks and Recs will also have some upcoming Easter events. There will be an Easter egg hunt on March 30th at the River Park and an Easter egg decorating workshop Friday, March 29th, and you can go to Parks and Rec and sign up for that. Also encourage everybody to sign up for our digital newsletter, Lumpoke Lately. It's a good way to tailor information and get current information quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go on to Consent Calendar. If you would like to make a comment on items 1 through 5, which is our consent calendar, you are more than welcome to come to the podium for your three minutes or call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone would like to make a comment, I will read the procedure for Consent Calendar. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, I will ask if there's any item to be pulled, any questions that do not need a pulling or a motion to accept Consent Calendar. Councilmember Ball?
So, I was gonna look at a couple of things, but I think just for the sake of time, I'm just, and again, some really nice folks have traveled, I think, a long distance. I was just curious to get a little bit more information on item number 5. It's a big price tag there, but I think we need some upgrades in this area. I just wanted some, maybe we can elaborate, someone can elaborate on what this is and what we're getting for that money.
Which staff member is coming to the microphone?
Don't be shy. And again, I'm not looking for any, there's no arguments here. I'm just looking for just kind of a general bullet points of what we're doing here. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Cityfolk. Which questions did you have for this project?
So, just for the whole item, I mean, we've got some folks here that are hopefully gonna win the contract to do some things. I'm just curious, what are we getting done? What are we doing? What's the scope of work?
Actually, they're not for this item.
I'm sorry.
This one is for upgrading the chamber here, the audio and
Perfect.
tying it all together.
Okay, thank you for clarity. So, if you can explain this one, because it's still $279,000, and what we're getting for that. So, thank you. Thanks, Dean.
We're getting an upgraded council system. You'll see two new speakers behind you. These other speakers back here will be obsolete. All of your microphones will be replaced, as well as some pads that will be placed in front of you for control. On Madam Mayor, you'll have a separate type of touchpad, very similar to the rest, and that timer that's up there will actually now be displayed here at the podium. You'll have the control to reset, add more time, as you see fit. And there will be upgrades done in the back room to control all these speakers.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you for clarifying. When's the last time we upgraded this system? Just curious, roughly.
I think it's close to 30 years old, isn't it?
It's time for new mics. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. All right, any other questions before we move on to a motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Consent Calendar.
All right.
A second.
And Councilmember Vega, seconds. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. There are no staff presentations this evening, but we do have oral communications. This is your opportunity to speak on an item that is under city control but is not currently on the agenda. So, if there's an item you would like to speak to, again, you have three minutes and you may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anybody calls in, I will mention that the Community Health Centers of Central Coast here in Lumpoke will have a free health fair April 6th, 2024. That's a Tuesday, and it will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 1300 West Ocean Avenue, and they will be providing COVID-19 and flu vaccines, blood pressure checks, oral health assessments, fluoride varnish treatments for kids, vision screenings, spinal alignment evaluations, information about their mental health services, and insurance enrollment assistance. Seeing no one rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Our first item of new business is item number six. Approve supplemental appropriations and purchase orders and receive and file records of procurement for wastewater, electric, and solid waste utilities. Adoption of Resolution Number 6638 (24), and that will be our Utility Director, Brad
Just an FYI, we're gonna leave this TV off, so, just because we don't wanna mess up the presentation.
I'm just glad Dean didn't hire me to perform the AV skills I don't have. So, these, this item and the next item are actually encompassed in this brief presentation. I did two staff reports on purpose because they're dealing with separate items, but they're all related to ongoing projects, capital projects of the utilities. I've been reviewing the ongoing and the proposed utility capital projects and capital outlays, and I found a few items that need to be addressed, and I figured I should do this in a transparent way. I noticed some issues that occurred during and before the budget cycle, and I just wanna move forward. I can't really answer why some of the direction that came down from the Finance Department on including prior projects into the current budget cycle, but it did happen, and I'm just gonna address those tonight. So, a lot of these are pictures, but I wanna kinda address some of the things that I'm requesting in both staff reports, number six and number seven. So, to give you a
Mayor?
Positive.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we should probably officially say that we are holding both items six and seven together at this time, just so the public is aware.
Sure, okay. So, item number seven is utility capital projects and capital outlay transfers and supplemental appropriation actions. Adoption of Resolution Number 663924. We will hear a presentation on both items, and then do public comment on both items, and then take separate motions for each item and a vote. Is that correct? Does that work?
Yes, that works.
All right, okay. Back to you, Brad.
I appreciate the indulgence. The, there's been several projects that were in works that have been or will be completed by the end of the year. I just wanna highlight two of them. The 4KV upgrade project has been going on for a generation, and the new electric utility manager has worked so that the crew's gonna get it done by the end of the year. The proposal and the budget was to have it by the time the budget cycle was over, so one year ahead of time. And it's been a long-range project, and we're looking forward to having it taken care of and being done. The other item is the landfill stormwater project. That was a state mandate by the Water Quality Control Board. That's been going on in one shape where, probably for 10 years. The bulk of it got started in March of '23, where the construction contract was put out and approved by the City Council. The work that needed to be done by the end of the, by the beginning of the water year was done, so all the functionality of it is done, but there's a lot of remaining parts of the project that need to be finished and should be finished by, at least by June 30th, if not maybe the first quarter after that. I skipped this one, but the, there was a line replacement project and a hydrant project, two separate projects that were being done by Water. This is a photo of them being done concurrently. We replaced out fire hydrants that are what are called dry barrel hydrants, and the proposal in the 2127 CIP was to have it done over several years. The prior Utility Director instructed the Water Manager to accelerate that into the current fiscal year, and it got done earlier this year. And that's one of the things I'm gonna be asking for later is to, although the direction to get it funded and done earlier, the funding was not brought forward, and the funding was not included in the budget, so we're gonna make some adjustments to clarify that. I mentioned the 4KV system earlier. This is just a one representation of some of the work that was being done by the crews. You'll see that the crossarms here on the poles are new. That was part of the work that they did to replace out the four-wire 4KV system with a three-wire 12KV system. And the reason we're doing the conversion is a 12KV system has less line losses and can cover more territory. It just, the standard has been 12KV for several years, and we've just been slowly replacing our 4KV system over time. This is one of our few remaining 4KV substations. Once the project's over, this will be decommissioned and taken out of service. For wastewater, they did a project that was required because the county was replacing Floridale Bridge. Floridale Bridge is where both the Vandenberg Village and Vandenberg Air Force Base pipes cross the river, bringing their wastewater effluent to the effluent, to the wastewater plant. Vandenberg Air Force Base took care of their own because they own that line, and we own the line, but it's paid for by Vandenberg Village. So, we took the lead on replacing the line that was on the old bridge, and that was completed right around the same time as the Floridale Bridge was replaced. Wastewater also had some failures at their treatment plant administration building that was, contracts were let soon after the winter storms last year because of the failure of the roof, and before that, the HVA system was non-functional effectively. So, two bids went out to get that work done, and it was completed just a few months ago. It's kinda hard to show lines under the streets, but for wastewater, they did a collection main replacement project in anticipation of Caltrans repaving Ocean Avenue. So, there was a fairly large project that they completed in time for, to allow Caltrans to do the fresh coat of pavement, and it was done in conjunction with that and coordination with them so that we wouldn't have to come back in and dig up a freshly paved street. The big project that was imposed on us by the Water Board was the stormwater improvements project for the landfill. The design that was decided on was, I think, actually fairly ingenious. It made the stormwater improvements for the landfill, and then it made diversion improvements to take the water that falls above the landfill and take that around the landfill, so it never touches the landfill proper, which allowed us to not have to treat multiple times amount of water that we are getting, because the amount of water that actually falls on the landfill is pretty small compared to what's in that entire valley. What you see here is the holding basin at the bottom of the landfill. This is where all the stormwater that comes off the landfill flows into and is allowed to have some of the solid settle out. And you'll see at the very bottom here, that's a structure where the water is flowing into the channels that go down to the olive street, where it's already been filtered out, and that's the main component that is what the Water Board wanted us to do. This is another view. This is looking down from the top, looking back towards the scale house. Where the backhoe is, is one of the large drain projects that they're working on, and once the drain is put in, they're gonna make that into an access road for both the water tanks that's up on the hill adjacent to the landfill and to allow landfill traffic to get to the higher points of the landfill. And this is just that same area looking upwards toward the base, the back of the landfill. So, this stuff doesn't affect what's in operations, but it will help complete the whole entire So, one of the things that Dean asked me to do when he asked me to come back was to help the utilities get plans ready to do the 2527 budget and the 253132 CIP. And when I was evaluating the four utilities, I noticed that a couple of them have some appropriations for that plan. One didn't have any, and one had a little bit less than the rest. In this, these staff reports, I'm asking that allow each of the four utilities to have enough resources to adequately plan for their future operations and the future direction of the utilities. At the bottom here, I show some of the things that those plans will have to do. Flow modeling for water and wastewater, capacity and load evaluation for the electric utility, and for solid waste, effectively whether we should expand the landfill a little bit that we're allowed to, or, and we're at that point where we'll have to start looking to the retirement of landfill within the next 15 to 20 years. And also the collection services, how much we would have to expand for new home construction, how much we would have to work on when some of the state mandates come out for electrification So, this is some of the significant projects that are underway. I have one page for Water and one page for the rest of the utilities. And for whatever reason, some of the projects that Water was working on in '21, '23, or even before that, didn't get into the '23, '25 budget, and I'll focus in on the three that, the four that are up here, the Lime Slaker, the Centifuge, the water filter system, and the well 10 design and construction. Those are, have been ongoing design projects. What I'm requesting tonight is to transfer some funds into those projects to replace the appropriations that were, that lapsed from '21, '23. Water also has several main replacement projects that are going on that will be coming back to you for evaluation. They do one a year, so those are up there for presentation purposes. The Tressa Interceptor is for our stormwater program. It was also something that was programmed in '21, '23 over several years, but for the '23, '25 budget, it was an item that was left out of the budget, and, but the project was ongoing and is continuing to go on, and it will be done by the end of '26, I believe, '25, June of '25. The last item on here is the lead service line inventory, which came up after the budget was done, but it's also a state mandate to look at service lines that are on the customer side of our meters to make sure that we don't have any lead in our pipes. And we know we don't have any lead in our service lines that get to the meter, but we have to also look at the lines beyond the meter, and that's, that's, like I said, a state mandate. Well 10 is proposed. The construction planning is ongoing and is getting very close to being brought back to you for consideration. It will look very much like well 10, well 11, and it will be just closer to the treatment plant. The work that was done on well 11, a lot of it was to build out the transmission line from there into the plant, which will be used by well 10 once it's constructed, so it's gonna be quite a bit less expensive than what it took to build well 10 because of the added infrastructure to get the water to the plant. The other three projects that I mentioned earlier, the Lime Slaker, the Centifuge, and the water filters are all located at a water treatment plant and in various buildings in the plant, so this is just to show you where those items are. So, moving on, there are also some significant projects that are in planning that the utilities are working on. There's a pilot project to upgrade our AMR reading system for the utilities for Water and Electric to AMI, which will allow a lot more functionality for not just billing, but also for operational efficiencies. That pilot project is ongoing, and if, and it seems to be successful so far, so there'll probably be a request in the '23, '25, '27 budget to complete it out throughout the system. The wastewater treatment plant has some proposals for the headworks and for their dry and emergency ponds, also a replacement and repair program for their collection system. Beyond that, there are some street lighting projects that Electric's working on for downtown and the City Hall parking lots. The rest of it is all vehicle acquisitions that either have been already approved. They've all been approved as part of the budget. They're just significant in nature. As you'll recall, we did a fairly aggressive purchase of collection vehicles so we could avoid some of the future mandates while we work into how we can provide the services under the new electrification mandates. Here's a summary of what's in the staff report and in the resolution for the transfers. This is showing where the transfers are going to. For stormwater, we had historically provided stormwater with a person in-house. So, we have in the '23, '25 budget compensation budgets, but with her retirement, we're moving that into a consulting-based process, because we just can't find somebody that can replace the person that was here. But in doing so, we can't access the compensation budgets, so I'm requesting that that money that's not gonna be used on the person be transferred over to the stormwater program for consulting, so we can continue that state mandate program. The next one is for the strategic program. Water didn't have any money budgeted for their, that program, even though solid waste and wastewater did, so this is to bring them up to be equal in, with the other utilities. And I also, I already mentioned the Lime Slaker, the Centifuge, the water filters, and the fire hydrant project, and the well 10. I'm also proposing, you'll see the main replacement projects here, I'm proposing moving them into subaccounts, 1, 2, 3, and 4. That's to allow finance to better track these projects as they move through the planning and the design phase. And you also notice that I had earlier stated they're around $2 to $2.5 million for completed projects. I'm only asking to move these amounts into the new accounts to support the planning phase of these projects. Once we move into the '25, '27 budget, we'll plan for the full amount for probably two of these, and then the next two would probably be in the '27, '29 budget. For wastewater and solid waste, the, I'm doing the same thing with these three vehicles that are already in the budget. I'm just proposing moving them into subaccounts, so they're better tracked for capitalization purposes. Same thing with the distribution system. They have some planning work that they're doing on some main replacements. I'm just asking to move them into separate categories to, for tracking purposes. The next one is, even though wastewater has a budget for their strategic plan, it's in one of the programs, I think it's in the treatment plant program, and I'm proposing just moving it into the administration program, so it covers the whole entire utility, not just one part of it. And with, same thing with solid waste, I'm moving that in, I'm asking to move that into the administration budget, so it covers both collections and the landfill. But here's the last main slide. This is the actual appropriation requests. All the other ones were just transfer requests. Asking to renew the appropriations for the Tressa Interceptor program. Same thing with the dump truck and the trailer mounted vacuum. Those were both budgeted in '21, '23, but were not brought forward into the '23, '25 budget, so I'm just asking to re-appropriate those funds, especially since Fleet has been working diligently on getting them acquired for the utility, for the water utility. Electric is the only utility that didn't have any money budgeted for a long-term plan, so I'm proposing to add that into the remaining budget for '23, '24, and the bulk of it in '24, '25. Same thing with solid waste. Same thing with solid waste on the strategic plan at the bottom. They budgeted three-hundred thousand dollars, and to bring them all into parity, I'm proposing adding fifty thousand dollars to that budget. You'll see a negative up here. That's primarily the Vandenberg Village line on the Floridale Bridge. We budgeted an amount for that that was going to be repaid by Vandenberg Village itself. We budgeted too much. So because we're not gonna be doing any more projects that are Vandenberg-specific, I'm proposing just to liquidate that appropriation entirely. And with that, the, the total amount of appropriations I'm showing at the bottom is about four-hundred thousand dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five, and, and less than a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's fairly reasonable compared to the total amount of the budgets that each of those utilities have. So this is just a reiteration of the conclusions from the, each of the two staff reports. Just asking to, I'm proposing to have these items, the resolutions passed, to allow for a seamless continuation of the projects and the planning for the projects that are ongoing within utilities. That's the end of my slides. I have some of my managers here if you have any specific questions, but I think I can answer a lot too, so.
So my basic understanding of this is there, you inherited this budget and found some discrepancies along with Mr. Albro, and a lot of this is cleanup and then streamlining for some strategic planning that we need but hadn't been appropriated.
Yeah.
And that the money is already in existence and is just being put into an account for better tracking, or is being pulled out of funds that exist in order to begin planning for things?
Yeah, the vast majority of the, their requests are coming out of existing appropriations that are going to be defunded because they can be moved forward into the next budget cycle, and we, we can re-appropriate, request for re-appropriation of them later.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Any questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
This is difficult to follow, Brad.
I apologize.
This is a cross between utilitarian and financinging. So I'm gonna ask that each of these, and these funds are coming out of that fund. We're removing, we're moving the money within that fund.
So except for the funding for, basically Stacy Lawson, who retired, everything else is from Fund Electric to Fund Electric, a, a sub-account within Electric, or wastewater to wastewater, water to wastewater.
Right, the only reason we're really even seeing this is because the amount that you're asking to move around within each of these funds, right?
Yeah, and to be honest, it could have been something that Dean could have approved at his level, but we decided that for accountability and for transparency.
Well, these all, a lot of this exceeds the hundred-thousand-dollar limit, you know, so it's, I see why we have it, and we're trying to wrap it up in a nice package without a bow, but...
And I do apologize because I, I looked at this and I considered doing one utility at a time versus what I did here, but I figured if I did that, then there's some projects that are well underway that by the time I bring it to you, they'll be done, and we just don't have the funding that light item to close it out.
Now, these projects are currently in our CIP.
Correct.
So...
Well, they're either in the current CIP, or they were in the twenty-one, twenty-three CIP, but because of direction failures prior to me, not from finance, finance was very clear to me before they went on vacation to say, "We gave clear direction that you have to re-ask for new stuff," and that, that just didn't happen in a couple departments. So the, they are in a CIP, they may not be in the current twenty-three, twenty-five CIP.
Right, well, I guess, well, my point is here is, CIP is what you're gonna base your impact fees on when you have that study done again. And here we're bringing out, you know, from, from the dead, here's well eleven again, which I know that project was killed a couple of years ago, and now it's resurrected, it appears, with this.
Well, it was in the twenty-one, twenty-three budget, and we'd been working towards getting it to the point where it can be brought to an RRP and then to you for approval of the contract, but between the twenty-one, twenty-three budget cycle and the direction that was given to my predecessor to have all that stuff brought forward to the twenty-three, twenty-five cycle, it didn't happen. So I'm proposing that because it's, it's probably ninety-five percent close to being sent out for RRP, if you want to not have it done, we should do that now or approve it to go forward because the water quality needs now are probably more important than what was proposed back a couple decades ago when it was just for quantity rather than quality.
You know, I'm kinda, I'll, I'll just focus on well ten for a minute. It's ironic, why did we choose that location?
Well, well eleven...
Well, well eleven's there.
Right, and well eleven is now producing and providing the city about eighty percent of its water needs.
Sure.
The other wells within the system, a couple of them are being decommissioned because they just don't produce enough to make it worthwhile. The evaluation that was done when well ten was evaluated, they both were evaluated at the same time, and the location where well ten is was determined to be as good as a location as well eleven is.
Because you're talking only a few hundred yards away, and if you're running well eleven at eighty percent of the call for the city's water, let's just say that's three and a half million gallons, what are we pulling away from where well ten is, a few hundred yards, basically?
So that's why I have Sean here, but my suspicion is that we, we won't be running the, both of them together.
We'll just suck them down at the same time, right?
Yeah, but they are in an area where the water quality and the water quantity is good.
Now?
Yeah, and the, we still have eight or nine wells that are outside that area, so we're...
All old wells, though, because our newest well is eleven.
But he, here's the thing, is if well da, well, I keep getting confused, well, well ten's the one that's in place. If that goes down for whatever reason and we don't have well eleven running, then the other wells may not be able to provide the total amount of quantity that we need to maintain our services. So having well ten is basically gonna be a backup and a cycle between well ten and well eleven.
Yeah, but our two main wells are gonna be right there together.
Yeah, and Electric, not Electric, Water did their due diligence back in twenty, whenever it was they did that, to make sure that was an appropriate place to put them both.
All right, well, I guess, it's just ironic, we had a, a big budget review and went through the enterprise's last meeting, and now we're talking about moving a whole bunch of money in here, so.
Well, I don't have an answer for why that instruction didn't get down to the managers, but I, what I wanna do is correct that and move forward, so.
It'd be interesting to see what the accounts are after this happens.
Councilmember Ball.
So, thank you for that presentation. I have kind of a general question, again, humor me just a little bit here. Again, I think all of these asks and adjustments are appropriate. I don't think these are big sums, I appreciate the clarity. But you did bring up something where your goal, and you'd shown where there's, you duplicated some accounts to make sure that there's more transparency, and you said there should be more transparency, we wanna keep more accountability. Well, with all of these line item things, over time, we as a council, we assume there is accountability and transparency already built in, but you're introducing that there may be ways to enhance that. So I just wanted you to elaborate a little bit, because I'm, you know, us up here as council, how do we use these updated attempts at more clarity and transparency? How do we keep accountability in this conversation?
Well, I think Councilmember Starbuck hit it right on the head, that the twenty-five, twenty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-nine CIP should have had some of these things in it, and for whatever reason, they weren't there. So, but they've been, been worked on actively between twenty-one, twenty-three, and now we're at a point where we don't have the funding, and I'm recommending that we rearrange some of the funding within each utility to take care of that. But part of that is, was a little bit selfish on my part, because I've been helping out finance over time, and looking at some of the capitalization of these projects, it's really hard to differentiate between four different projects that Water's working on when they're all in the same account. So by splitting them out into separate accounts, it makes it a little bit easier for finance to track each and every one, so that we have a better idea and a more accurate accounting of how much we can capitalize for Project twenty-four-dash-W-dash-one, instead of having to go through and try to figure out how much of this account is for twenty-four and how much is for twenty-five. So it's, it's more on the side of making it easier for staff to manage what's out there, but the responsibility and what we should be expecting of ourselves is to give you all the information as part of the budget cycle, and from my review, that wasn't totally done, but I'm trying to rectify that right now.
So I, I wanna thank you so much for saying that, and the reason I wanted to talk about this specific thing and accountability is because I feel strongly that from a director's position, it's the job of that director to show transparency and accountability. You talked about added efficiencies, being able to know whether something's even worth the investment, and that's our job too at council, to figure out, are we making wise investments? So again, thank you for being a thought leader on this. I hope all of our directors take all of those light items very seriously and they, you know, look for ways to maintain or build efficiencies, and part of that is being accountable.
Yeah, and part of this, part of what I've been doing over this time is also to use as, as an educational experience for my managers. One's fairly new, and one's been here for a long time, and others in between, but all five of us are learning something new as we move through this and try to look to see what the path is going forward that's the most appropriate, making sure we follow our procedures, the policies, all that stuff, to make sure that we're doing the right things when we're taking the budget and implementing those capital projects going forward.
Thank you, appreciate your good work.
If I could add to, one of the things that I, I asked Brad to look at this, and he did an outstanding job of basically cleaning up the CIPs, because what I was seeing in the budget book is, you know, I would see in the budget book that they're proposing that we're gonna have a two to three million dollar deficit, and when the financials came out, we had a surplus of one to two million, and I'm like, okay, we're not doing a very good job of showing the council exactly what we're proposing to get done. So that's the idea here, and you can notice that, one of the things we did too is we took all the vehicles and we took them out of fleet, and we put them into all the utilities. That showed the assets and liabilities where they should be, and you see Brad is cleaning that up. And what that's gonna allow us to do in the future too is to see patterns and, and actually come forth with better CIPs, so we're showing what we're really gonna spend during that period. So to me, it's, it's a transparency drill, and I, I wanna thank Brad, he did an outstanding job with this drill, so, thank you.
All right, any more questions for Brad before we go to public comment? All right, you're out of the hot seat for the moment. You are welcome to come forward. You are making public comment on items number six and seven, and you have three minutes if you'd like to come to the podium. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two one zero, eight two zero one, sorry about that, eight two zero one, and you have three minutes. While we wait to see if anybody comes to the podium or calls in, I'm gonna make another public announcement, that's on my list. The Lompoc Valley Community Health Organization, as well as the City of Lompoc and the Lompoc Unified School District, are having a kickoff event with the Caltrans Active Transportation Program that we jointly received a grant for. The event will be Thursday, March fourteenth, from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty a.m. at the Lompoc Gardens Community Meeting Room that is located three hundred West College Avenue. It's part of the multi-agency partnership that secured three million dollars to work on improving sidewalk access, some crosswalks in some very particular places. And so by participating in this kickoff event and providing feedback as they work forward on this plan, we'll make sure we're improving our neighborhoods and our walkability and safety. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in on items number six and seven, we'll bring it back to council. We'll have a motion on item number six and a vote, and then we'll do a motion on item number seven, unless there are any further questions on either item. All right, I will entertain a motion on item number six. Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation with adopting resolution number six-six-three-eight, parentheses twenty-four.
All right.
Second.
And Councilmember Vega seconded that. Let's vote. And that passes five-zero. And then we'll entertain a motion on item number seven, unless there are any questions on it. Councilmember Vega.
Three-nine with parentheses twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right, so motion to accept staff recommendation and adopt the resolution, motion made by Councilmember Vega, and seconded by Councilmember Ball. Seeing no questions, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Madam Clark, did we have any written communications for this evening?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with Councilmember Ball for council comments and reports.
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
All right, Councilmember Cordova? No reports. Councilmember Vega?
Nothing really to report, but thank you all for staying here through the meeting and paying attention, because we can't do it alone, so thank you.
All right, I have a few meetings. The regular meeting, legislative and regulatory, and executive meeting for the Northern California Power Agency, which we're a member of, having our own electrical power, I attended last month, as well as the Cal Counties League of California Regional Dinner, I represented Lompoc at that dinner, and then the Vandenberg Space Force Base twenty-twenty-three Annual Awards, I also attended that, representing the community, last Friday. I wanna give a shout-out to Sunset Auto, they provided the funds to cover the costs for the awardees attending, so it was great to know that they, those, those military members and civilians did not have to pay for their dinner to attend the annual award due to Sunset Chevrolet, so I wanna thank them for that. I also just got back, I have no voice because I just returned from Washington, D.C., where I participated in the American Public Power Agency Conference as a member of NCPA, and went to the Hill and to several agencies where we go and advocate on behalf of public power. We need to make sure that we advocate and remind our federal legislators that public power is held accountable at the local level, we are able to keep the prices down, and we need their support when they move legislation through that might impact us. At the same time, the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments had planned their federal trip. I am the immediate past chair, I participated in several of their meetings because they were also in D.C., so for several days, I was bouncing between the American Public Power and NCPA, as well as SB CAG advocating on the Hill and with federal transportation, rail representation about issues regarding Highway one-on-one, the rail in the area, and freeway issues in general. So I just wanna thank the council for their support in, in my being able to do that. Last but not least, really exciting news, I wanna thank the council for forming the Lompoc Community Benefit Foundation. We've been working for years to stand it up, organize it. Council serves as the chair on the Lompoc Community Benefit Foundation. The membership is the chair or representative from our Beautification Commission, our Library Commission, our Public Safety Commission, our Parks and Rec Commission, and I'm missing one of them. There's four, and then beautification. It's okay. It's public safety, parks and rec, library, parks and rec, and beautification. Okay, got all five of them. Anyway, we got notice of a grant application at the end of last year by one of the members of the, of the commission. She presented it to us, we met and agreed that we would apply, and McDonald's granted the benefit foundation a thousand dollars. We just received it this past week. The local McDonald's chooses to sponsor it, and so we wanna thank our local McDonald's and their ownership for, for choosing the Lompoc Community Benefit Foundation and issuing a thousand-dollar... Community Benefit Foundation and issuing a $1,000 McDonald's Golden Grant. It will be utilized by the Public Safety Commission and has been gifted to the Police Department to return the junior police camp. It had happened for several years, but over the last couple of years, they had not had the staff or the budget. This grant enables them to return the camp this summer and helps cover the overtime and the supplies they need for a three-day camp that will service eight to 14-year-olds interested in attending the camp. So I want to thank the commission. I want to thank the council. This is what we formed it for, and to get our first grant is really exciting. And to thank the volunteers, the volunteer work they put in to write their first grant and submit it was really exciting. So I just wanted to share that. All right. So I believe that is all the announcements we have, and we will adjourn our, yes, Councilmember Ball.
So just, I just want to make a quick point, that the mayor has been saying all of these wonderful things that she's participated in because she didn't want us to bring up this fact, and I'm just going to say it because I can. It's her birthday today. So wish the mayor a happy birthday when you see her. Happy birthday.
I don't shy away from the fact that it's my birthday. I am very happy to have made another trip around the sun, so thank you for that. Now, we will adjourn the Lompoc City Council meeting to our next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on March 19, 2024.